Good evening and welcome to the November 19th, 2018 meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States Republic, stands one nation, God, liberty, justice-
So tonight we have Board Member Brandy Nunez excused and we wish her a happy holiday trip. And we also have Superintendent Chaffrey excused and wish her as well a good holiday week. So we are on to item number two, which is public participation. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close public participation. And we will go on to number three, which is Board's response to the high school's request for to conduct student, family, and staff opinion surveys as part of the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, which is commonly known as NEASK's accreditation process. So I invite to the table Eileen Banfield, Mark Maryfield, and Marcy Pope. Thank you and welcome. Give them nicer chairs. So there you are. Want to make sure your light is on? So just press the button. Is it glowing?
There it is.
There we are. Now welcome. Mic is yours.
NEASK, if you're not familiar with it, is the 10-year process accreditation process that our school goes through and all, most New Hampshire or most schools and colleges in the area do go through. Just to make sure we're doing what we should be doing, that we are aligning ourselves with the standards that they set. And so we are up for reaccreditation in the spring of 2021. And this process has been revamped. So if you are familiar with it, it has changed a little bit. And this new improved NEASK or this new process is less evaluative. And it is more about identifying some priority areas, some areas for growth that we need, and acknowledging upfront what we do well. Not waiting until that 10-year visit to say, this is, this is what you need to improve on. So part of that is the collaborative conference, which will be, which will happen the spring, in spring of 2019. And this collaborative conference will be a smaller visit by NEASK to see what we've come up with and what we've self-identified as some areas of growth that, and some areas of need, and you know, what we think we're doing well. In order to be able to have this collaborative conference visit, we need to write self-reflection reports. And these self-reflection reports are just that. They're, they're reflective of how we think we're doing. And in order to get the data to write those reports, NEASK has surveys that they have, that they have constructed. And we give these to families. Staff fills them out as well as students. And they are, the data that we get from that, then the, our school writes the reports. And they are, you should have copies of those reports. They should have been forwarded to you.
We do.
And this survey has been piloted. It's in its second year of use. So all schools that have gone through the accreditation processes or currently going through this new process have, have been using them. And we're hoping that you will approve our use of them. And Ms. Putney did write in her letter to you that she was hoping that you could just tonight because we are anxious to get the surveys moving forward.
We have a timeline reason. The NEASK visit is in the spring of 2019. The NEASK visit is in the spring of 2019, scheduled May right now. Well, tentatively scheduled in May right now. And so we need to not only use the data from the survey, but also doing our own data gathering process. And in order to get our staff, who's, the staff is doing this report. It's not just Eileen and myself and Mark. It's, the whole staff is divided up into committees to write it. So the data's got to be disseminated to all of them. And then they've got to use that in the questions that they have to answer and write about. And then the report has to be completed before the visit in May of 2019.
That sounds like a lot of work. So I will open it to the Board if there's any questions. Naomi?
Hi, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Quick questions, just kind of diving right into the heart of some of this. It says on each of these that the surveys are confidential. But there's a difference between confidentiality and anonymity and things of that sort? Can you talk a little bit about where the data goes, who has the data, whether it's identifiable to them by individual, things of that sort?
Sure. The, the survey data goes directly back to NEASK. So we, we never actually see any of the, well, we don't see any of the individual data at all. We just get a report back with the, with the number of responses and the, and so forth to each question and how they were answered and so forth. But we don't have any, it's to, it is really truly anonymous as far as where anyone is concerned.
But, but they'll know, but there'll be the survey for the students, so they'll know the population is the student population. They'll know that the population is the teacher population and they'll know that the, the community population. That's it.
Right. Three separate surveys.
Will they have a way of knowing whether a particular student has completed the survey, for example?
No, no.
Andy?
And to follow along with that, students will, this is optional for the student, right?
Right. It's optional. We're encouraging as much participation as possible. But if a student wanted to opt out, they certainly could.
Right. I mean, so there's, so I guess the question is, how are they going to be notified the survey exists? Is it email? Is it some other-
We were planning on surveying the students during English classes.
It's an online survey.
Right.
The families will know as well.
Well, that's the key is, I mean, we get, we get hit up with surveys a lot at the Board. And parents want to be able to chime in to, to know, A, know what's going to happen and B, allow their students to opt out if they don't want to. So as long as the process allows both of those things to occur.
Right. The, we'd expect that Mrs. Putney will be notifying the parents, assuming that this is approved.
Okay.
Before it's given, of course.
Right.
Sure. Okay.
And my question is on the family survey. How are, how are you getting your sample? Are you looking to get all parents, nine to 12? Are you going to do random sampling?
We're not, well, what's going to happen is Mrs. Putney will use our school messenger software to get the word out. So she'll be emailing the parents. And it'll be whatever parents respond based on that.
We have to have a minimum of 25% of the parents respond.
Of all, nine through 12? Okay.
We do want to keep the, the URL for the survey somewhat private in the sense that if we just put it out for the general public, we might not be sampling the right population.
Right. So you may sample residents who aren't parents.
Right.
That, that's completely fair. And I guess the only other question I have is knowing that, you know, you may have two parents with two students or two parents with one student. Does it also take the IP address into account when, when doing the survey? So like if my husband and I both want to take the survey on the same computer, would it knock one of us out?
I don't believe so. They, they say in the directions that there's, if you, there's no need to take the survey more than once per family. But I, I don't see anything in there that would prevent someone from doing that if they really wanted to.
Okay. Andy?
Just one other thing to get to Naomi's point earlier. The intro for each one of the surveys says the survey's confidential. Results will be used. You might want to modify this to say, and the, and the results are anonymous, just so they know. Because as Naomi said, confidential means that it may be identifiable back to the person that did it. But because you're using the same URL, URL for everybody, it's inherently anonymous. And if it truly is, you need to sort of say that.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. So are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, what we, I will do is entertain a motion to, to approve the administration of the surveys waiving the two-week rule. Would anyone like to do that? Cindy?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the surveys waiving the two-week rule.
Is there a second? Seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 400. So you're all set. We wish you all the luck in the accreditation process.
Thank you.
It's going to be a lot of work. We know that.
Thank you very much.
So we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we're on to item number four, which is the presentation of the capital improvement plan for 2019 through 2025. So I invite to the table Tom Toussot. Matt Chevanel will represent administration. And we may also get a visit from Rich Hendricks, who is the Chair of our District Planning and Building Committee.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom, for coming in. The process that the CIP goes through is we first look at it as administration. We have meetings with our Facilities Director, Tom Toussot, to go through the capital projects that are on his radar. And we've even spoken to principals if they have any concerns that they have in their buildings also. Then we put our heads together, put our best thinking on paper, and we go to the School District Planning and Building Committee. So anything you see on this spreadsheet that's red is something that was changed by the Planning and Building Committee. In one of them, you'll see an arrow that moves something over on the lower, lower lines. So once it goes to the Planning and Building Committee, the School District Planning and Building Committee, then obviously it comes before the Board for, you know, reconsideration, for their input. They, you know, the School Board obviously can move things around, change priorities. And then after it's blessed by the School Board, it goes in front of the Town Planning Board. That's the, the laws on the books. All departments within a town have to present their capital improvement program to the town of, that they live in, their planning board. So it has to go in that direction after it's done with the School Board. And the Planning Board will go and review it. We'll do a presentation there. Probably much like what you see here, maybe a little bit different. But then they'll have their recommendations and they'll communicate that back to the school district. So with it, with saying that, the first item we have, I'll just go right down the list. That'll be easier if we keep it by project, is roofing. You know, we've been about roofing projects for quite a few years. We changed the product as far as the roofing goes to give us a much greater warranty. So we start off and you have a map that Tom produced showing you, and I'll, I'll probably scan this and make this available online, showing you the shaded areas in blue that equate to the project that is up in 2019, 2020, that encompasses both JMES and J MUSE. A little bit of both at opposite ends of the building. And then we go through to 2021. We have a large section of Thornton's Ferry. I believe those are the 97 additions, the ends of the H of the school. Then in 21, 22, we have a million-dollar project, MES and J MUSE. Then in 22, 23, we're back to the same building. 23, 24, back to the same building. And then 24, 25, we have a project scheduled at the high school. This is, you know, kind of the best thinking that we have right now. Every year, Tom goes out and walks the roofs and checks on their conditions. So while we have this down here now in this order, depending upon circumstance, things may change in the future. So that's what we have for this year is the blue section for James Mastercoler Upper Elementary School and JMES. I need to add that in the title. For $655,000, $655,805. So that's the first item.
And just to clarify, the roofing that you were mentioning has a 35-year warranty?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And the other thing you may want to mention is at 24, 25, that's the end.
That's the end for-
The curve, the roofing based on-
The roofing projects that we currently have lined up. Let me give you this, a copy of this, Tom.
Right. So a clarifier, yeah. So a clarifier to Matt would be that at 24, 25, would we have replaced all the roofing in the district with the roofing that has a 35-year warranty? Would that be a better question, I guess?
No, the answer to that probably is not.
Okay.
We've done a lot of work. As you probably are aware, and just for everybody else to know, we have roughly 11 and a quarter acres of roof in our district. When we first started this project, and I think that was in the year, well, it started around 2009. We started, we had 72% of our entire roofs were off warranty. The way I feel about roofs, normally you take your warranty and on a good day, you can add five years and that's when you probably should replace. Sometimes it is the date they're off warranty, they need to be replaced. The good news, like I said, we were around 70, 72% after this project, before this project is completed, we are now at 36%. After this project, we're at 32%. And if you look at the percentage of roofs that we have in this district that are over five years after a warranty, that is 17%, which has been a great march for us as far as roofing.
But when you see the, the bonded debt schedule, there is, after 24, 25 in the year 25, 26, there is a significant gap that we could take some time to build up the capital reserve account, taking the monies we would normally put towards roofs and pull it from surplus and beef up the capital reserve account for roofing, which is still open, but it only has a few thousand dollars left in it. That's a future strategy for a future Board to decide. But that's what we've been saying all along. It would be a nice fit in that area.
Right. So the document we're looking at shows the roofing projects through 24, 25, which will get us through a lot of that 35-year warranty material. But then there's a gap from 25, 26. Up until 30, 31, there are no roofing projects. And then 31, 32, it's $11,000 worth, so a very small Band-Aid project. Then it jumps to 35, 36, where it's maybe $100,000. Of course, we're guestimating based on market values against a smaller project. Then it jumps to 38, 39 with half a million, and 49, 50 with like 839,000. So when you're considering, we're talking about, we have a plan through 2050, you know, barring any, you know, unforeseen circumstances, that we are really looking at roofing projects through 49, 50. So I think that's important for the public to understand that we don't look at things in the short term or the Band-Aid. We, we strategize for the long term to stabilize the tax rate whenever possible. So I think this is a perfect example of how that's done. And Tom, your department gives us the opportunity to do that. So thank you. Are there any questions on roofing? On to paving?
Paving. This is an item that we're looking at. There's actually two paving items, one of whom we wanted to, to separate out because there's a sidewalk included. That was our best thinking at the, at the time. But we have in 2021, we've committed to doing O'Garret Drive and then the sidewalk on O'Garret Drive from where it meets Babusick Lake Road all the way up to the student parking lots where the existing sidewalk lies. It's, I don't know how many feet that is, but that, that's the estimated cost of doing that. So you could basically connect the entire loop from Babusick Lake Road in front of the upper elementary school of O'Garret, in front of the high school, coming down McKelwane, and keep going in a circle. The sidewalk on O'Garret has been something that's been discussed at the Town Center Committee, a committee of which I'm a member of that, per the request of the Board. And so I think they're kind of counting on this to happen in 2021.
Okay. And to that end, are there grants we can pursue through Safe Roots to School, et cetera, that might be able to offset some of those?
Not, not for this project. Safe Roots to Schools for, for projects of around $400,000 and more. And the money by then, the money has been drying up. And I don't, I don't see any grants for any sidewalks on school-owned property.
Okay.
The town can get grants for sidewalks through the highway reimbursement account, the fund that they have through the state, but not us.
So we wouldn't be able to use, they couldn't apply for a grant that would actually apply to our facilities?
No, we couldn't do that.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity. Are there any questions on paving and sidewalks? On to paving and drainage. Back to you.
Yeah, we kind of combine the 1920 project, Mastercoler Elementary School and J MUSE, the little parking lot right near the new entrance or the entrance that you go into vote. And then in the, the circle where Mastercoler Elementary School is, we had a meeting with, Tom and I had a meeting with, a conversation with, we always pick the, like, the coldest days to meet with Steve Keach. I don't know what it is. We, we went from the bleachers that are in process to the parking lot at Mastercoler Elementary School to look at that. And he's going to draw up some scenarios. But, but the planning is, is if you stand in the middle of the Mastercoler Elementary School parking lot, on a day where it's been raining quite heavily, you can be standing in a foot of water. Doesn't drain well. You actually, when you stand in the middle of that parking lot and you look at the entrance of Mastercoler Elementary School, it drops probably around five feet. Steve pointed that out to us and, yeah, I've, I've been going there forever. And I never really realized that when you do stand there, there is such a significant drop in grade that contributes to everything. And plus, as he was talking about, there's no visible barriers or entrances to lead you into that entrance. There's no indication in the parking lot that this is the entrance. So we could do something, and I'm not going to say, you know, put up islands all over the place, but we could do something with the pavement, taking out some pavement to provide some natural drainage near that area to actually have it look like there is your entrance. So there's a few things going on here. The, the drainage, probably restriping it to give us more parking spots. Because Steve said the striping as it's configured right now is terribly inefficient. The way it's just lined up in two rows, then a row along the tree line, and then that's it. You've got this big space in front of the Smith Gym with nothing going on. You don't want to park there anyway because it's on such a steep slope. So if everything's kind of brought up more level, proper drainage is put in to have this drain properly, you could probably gain, I don't know, what did he say, another 15, 20, 20 spaces out of the parking lot?
Yeah, that's, that was his thought, depending on how it ends up laying out. We do need to take in factors that the buses do pull up there. So some of those lanes have to be a little wider than a normal lane would. So he's, he's working on reconfiguring the whole thing.
Yeah, all right. So that's the project in 1920. And then we have the parking lots at the high school. This is the main parking lot out in front of the high school, kind of adjacent to the, the Blue House and the, the main entrance. And then in 23, 24, we're looking at doing the lots along where the highway is currently, DW Highway. The first couple are teacher lots and then it goes into student lot.
Clarity, you mean the Everett Turnpike?
Everett Turnpike, yeah. What did I say?
DW Highway.
DW Highway? Okay.
Different.
Yeah, different one. I was, I was almost going to say Route 3, but I know that's not Route 3. Route 3 is down below. DW Highway.
It's DW Highway, exactly.
Yeah. My wife makes fun of me all the time on that because I always just, I still call the highway Route 3. And I shouldn't do that. So along Daniel Webster Highway, adjacent to Daniel Webster-
Everett Turnpike.
Everett Turnpike. Oh my gosh. Stop talking, Matt. Along the Everett Turnpike. So that'd be good because then, by then, we'd know what's happening with the highway and the expansion and everything like that. So if our parking lots need to move a little bit or be reconfigured in such a fashion, we can, we can take care of it at that time and not have new asphalt go down and then have it, you know, interfered with, with any highway expansion. So that's basically the, all the paving projects we have. Like I said, MES, J MUSE, O'Garret, the sidewalk, two at Merrimack High School, one every year, skipped one in 22, 23, and then come back at 23, 24 and do the last of the student parking lots. Those lots haven't been touched since probably 1997, I think. Because I remember when I, when I first got here in 2000, I was doing the reimbursement for building aid for the parking lots back then. And it was, I was filling, filling out the final forms to get the, the money for that from the state when they had building aid back in the old, good old days. But yeah, it's been a long time since those have been done. They haven't crack sealed though. But I don't know if you want to care to say anything about the condition of the pavement. Tom pleads the fifth because I messed up the name of the highway six times. He doesn't want me to do it again.
Okay, so Cindy and I think Andy?
So you brought up the highway, which is a good point. And I was thinking of it earlier as we were talking about the sidewalk on O'Garret Drive as well. I mean, I would just say, just a heads up, I think, to this whole group. It's not slated for this coming year, at least that particular project. But we might want to keep a close eye on that highway thing too because I'm wondering if it, this project might fall in lines with your comments about kind of waiting till that whole highway project is done and then putting those in as to not have anything disrupted. So I would just say, I don't think it's affecting what we plan to do for this next year. But if we keep an eye on it in the future and see what makes the most sense.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I agree.
Andy?
So a couple of things. First, originally Matt mentioned that it was two separate things put together into one under paving and drainage for this upcoming budget year. Originally, Matt had a separate category called drainage on the CIP. And I wanted to make sure, I, I was one of the ones encouraged you put it together because it makes no sense to redo the parking lot without doing the drainage or vice versa. So you have to look at it holistically. That's why it's, it's a larger amount than just normal paving is because it includes both pieces. The other thing is that, similar to what Cindy said about the O'Garret Drive sidewalk, the two parking lots, one which is affected by the Everett Turnpike. Got it right, didn't it?
Got it right.
But the other is that, the other parking lot is adjacent to the Blue Building and other things, which we know could be impacted by the, anything that we might choose to do for the SEU Sped Building in coming years. So I think generally speaking, all of these paving projects that are near the high school, we need to sort of time them out and make sure they stagger, taking into account the other things that are going on in that section over the coming years. So it's a, it's a good heads up just to look at this. But you're right, because it's not next year we have to worry about it, so.
Okay. And I just had a quick question of clarity. And that is the 2021, 22 project with O'Garret, McKelwane parking lots and then the parking lots down O'Garret Drive by the Everett Turnpike. Is there, are there drainage issues that need to be addressed for both of those projects? Or is that just specifically related to the MES and J MUSE entrance area?
I haven't seen any drainage issues in those two lots, no.
Okay. So that was my question. So on to Brentwood property for SAU consolidation. Okay.
Well, we spoke with the Planning and Building Committee. And you see some letters in red there. It's calling to do something, to be defined as far as scale, scope, and cost in the 2020, 2021 year to take the existing building that is there, that's called Brentwood, and remove it and then build a brand-new central office in its place. However it would be configured to suit the- to suit the land and a potential new traffic pattern and flow and everything like that, and do that in 2021. That was the recommendation of the Planning and Building Committee, and to that end, I have, we have the chairman of the Planning and Building Committee who's kind enough to come to the meeting to talk about this one. I assume, Mr. Hendricks, you'd like to discuss this?
You know, again, excuse me, we realize we have no real authority or anything on this, where it gets done and how it gets done, but it is more of a statement to the board that something needs to be done and something needs to be done soon. It's not as important if one is done in front of the other economies of scale, might be best to do it all at once. But what we originally had put, or what was originally here was demo or renovation. And we looked at renovation, and as you've been toured the building, we have toured the building, and it is beyond comprehension that any school district let anybody in that building last year. It's nice we care about safety for our children, because the building is just flat-out deplorable. So, we looked at it as there could be parts of it salvageable. The only thing that really looks even possible, if you look at it from straight on, the very left of it, is probably just open classrooms and that might be able to be reconfigured. The rest of it is absolutely, completely, and totally handicap inaccessible. You've got, I don't even know where they put the stairs, down one, then you go back upstairs and you go down this hallway, they're narrow, the doors, none of them fit any building code for handicapped people, considering that part of this building is your special services, it's wholly inappropriate. So, again, it's not, we have a project coming for you, I believe, in April, that will be a little more exacting, but we just couldn't put renovate as that was the alternative. It looks very, very close to something of new construction, if not the whole thing, then at least a partial part of it. So again, it's just more of a, we need to do something, it probably won't exist as is what exactly it is, and that's what we're looking at for the next couple of months, yourselves and the committee. So it's more along those lines, excuse me, that it just, something has to be done with that building. I don't want to leave anyone the impression, and Andy, I know, did a very good job throughout the voting process of making sure people understood we were buying land, and that was the most important part of that entire purchase. And we just concur with that.
Thank you. I see a hand up for Andy, so I'll start with him.
So I want to back you away a little bit from the edge of the cliff that you were on. I think that the planning board, I mean, first of all, just to be clear, the school board's made no decision on exactly the disposition of the Brentwood building. It's a building, structurally it's there, it has potential for use, there's an action that the Assistant Superintendent of Business is finding to see what it would take to allow us to utilize it for some level of function between now and whenever we actually reach the actual, what we're going to do with the building. So let's, let's not jump to a conclusion that there's no use for it in the interim, because there could potentially be, and we'll find out more in a future meeting about that. But I think one of the things that we've got to be careful of is, there's many options in front of us as to what we do for the SAU Sped Building. Could it be at the Brentwood site? Sure. Could it be at another site? Potentially. Could the Brentwood site be used for something other than a build, an SEU Sped Building? Possibly. There's many options that are here. I know that there was one proposal at the Planning, at the Planning and Building Committee meeting to just demo it and without any, without any next step, which I think is, is an issue because you've got to know the big picture before you do anything.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't go along, excuse me, I, I would not approve that.
I know, and it wasn't by the Planning and Building, but there, there's a whole, the point is, there's a lot of varying thoughts about that building, that land, and what we're going to do with it. I think that demo slash build as a, as a statement on here is misleading because we don't know the disposition of what build means, and we also don't know that demo makes sense ahead of time, right? Just like we couldn't say demo the Blue Building or the Rebuilding or anything like that. So, I'm going to make a motion when we get to that point of the CIP. That we change the determination of this is, instead of demo-build, say, I actually would prefer that we not talk about Brentwood property for SAU, but talk about SEU consolidation and just put a placeholder, say TBD or something along those lines, because I think we just don't have enough information to say, is it that building? Is it demo-build?
Well, yeah, and that's, and that makes all the sense in the world. The reason we changed it is because as it was presented to us, it said demo or renovation. And there's even choice C and D attached to that, so.
Right.
None of it probably makes a whole lot of sense. It was more, we were making a statement saying, we can't see it being 100% renovated, however we don't know where that's going to end up, and we've got about four months worth of work to figure that out.
I just think it's an opportunity for us to not, to not draw to a conclusion yet before we all look back in front of us, that's all, so.
Excellent, and I would just echo what Andy said. I think what's very important is, this is a public document, and it's definitely not for statement purposes as much as it's for transparency purposes. It's to guide, to guide us as a board, guide our planning board, that we present to guide this community who funds this with their tax dollars, what our responsibilities are to our infrastructure and how we plan for it. And having, I mean, demo-build to me is a very, it's, I wouldn't, inflammatory is not the right word, but I would say it's a defining statement, and we haven't defined the right path yet, but that's why we waited, because the work needs to be done, it needs to be done in a methodical, logical process that will get us to an appropriate conclusion. So with that, I think those words need to come out. If we feel, and having a CIP with no dollar amount is like having a wallet with no, with no cash or credit cards, it just has, you know, a picture of your dog. It's nice and comforting, but it doesn't tell you anything. It doesn't tell you where you stand, so, and who you are. So, this is what the CIP should be doing for us. So I think we want to put, if we want to put a number in here, as a board, we should do that. But we definitely don't want to put a strategy in here, because that's not what it's for.
So, we going to talk about this afterwards, after they get through presenting the whole thing?
Well, if you want to go one by one, but.
Well, I think the key is, is one of the difficulties is, we just don't know exactly what a number is for this building quite yet.
That's fair.
I mean, the last number that was on here was, I think, low. It was the last thing that showed in the CIP.
I think it was 1.8.
1.8 million, but remember during the last year, the proposals that we saw of doing other things were significantly more than that? And I think that any number that we put is guess at this point in time. The question is, do we want to put a stake into the ground? You put a not-to-exceed number in here, I would suggest we do something significantly higher, but I also don't want to freak out the transparency too, because to be honest, anything that we pull is, is not specific, so.
Okay, and Cinda's hand was up.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could put a range in it. I mean, there's several dollars that have come before us that we've talked about, a variety of different things, they're public, they're in the minutes. So I think if we stayed, you know, let's say, I don't know, 1.5 to 5 million or something, yeah, but it is, it is, we don't know differently though, right now, so.
And Naomi, your hand was up?
I think a fair point with the build concept versus, the language change has definitely been made, and I appreciate the clarity that that brings, because I think that it essentially, yeah, highlights, Andy, what you said, we've essentially put the Brentwood property here as the site for the SAU consolidation, and that's a determination we haven't made. I think that it brings us right back to that line, which in some ways, yeah, is problematic.
Can I interject?
Of course you can.
Just, I'm going to go right with Naomi. I mean, that is, our April meeting with you is to go back, and what does it cost? We've got four options. We've got the woods by the, on O'Gara Drive there, I'm sorry, the woods by the high school parking lot. We've got the O'Gara property that's still valid. We can possibly somehow rebuild part, if not all the red building, and then we have a total eliminate and build from new. So all those four options, and I wouldn't have a clue what to put down as a range.
And I think, you know, to that end, what I would say is, for the CIP, it changed, this item changed year over year. When we first put this in, I think I was still on Planning and Building my time before the board, and I think it was 1.2 million. So a number can change based on the market value adjusting its, its cost. We have to do that with paving all the time. The cost of petroleum drives the rates of all the, all the projects that we do. So if we put in what is a current estimate, it's not legally binding, it's what I would call an educated guess. So I would be okay with a number that was moderate. I don't want to be, create undue concern by throwing a number so high or an insincere comfort with a number too low. So I think that, you know, if we found something down the middle to use as a placeholder, I think that's an appropriate thing to do, because I think, you know, when you put a range, think of the wild speculation we hear out in, you know, in the public with what, when we, when we have deliberations at our table, you know, when we talk, it's, that's what we're doing, that's, you know, it's, you know, we can't even be held, we have to be held to something, you know, so if we're going to be held to something, I want it to be moderate, not over the top, but not underwhelming where we come back and double down when, when the truth, you know, when the true project comes out. So, I would rather we did something along those lines. Cinda, then, Andy?
And I'm fine with that approach. I mean, we can always asterisk it, you know, put an asterisk and, you know, put an explanation of what that number represents and how it is estimated at this particular time, and as we have more information, it will evolve.
Absolutely.
But I think it's a good point to put a dollar amount there for the fact that this is exactly what this tool is for.
Definitely. Andy?
So, first a comment, I want to make sure that, because I know that whenever this is discussed and the public has a chance to chime in, there's always, school district went out and wasted the town's money to buy a worthless piece of property. I think it's important to state that the land was, as Rich said, the land was the most important thing, the sort of a one-time opportunity to buy the land and to join this. There are many options for this land if the SAU Sped Building does not get built on it, even though I think that's the intent of the board, is to look at that as primary opportunity, but there are countless other uses that will add value to the town and the district. So I want to make sure people understand that our purchasing, when we did, was key and important, and was definitely the right thing to do, even though we don't yet have the formal plan for what the SEU Sped consolidation next step is. But that being sped, sped, that being said.
You're saying there's a highway next.
I think for a placeholder, I'm going to make a motion, is now the right time to do this or not?
No, it's not, no.
So my proposal, my proposal is going to be that we generalize the statement and call it SAU consolidation, generally, and I'm going to propose that we pick a value of 2.8 million, as a middle ground based on what we've heard. So think about that by the time we get to that point, so.
Okay, we're not there yet, but.
I know, I know, I just, I figured we'd talk it all through while it was fresh in mind.
It's good, I'm glad you did, so. So are there any other questions on SAU consolidation? Seeing none, Matt, you get the, you get the floor back with Bleacher updates.
Thank you. This is an item that was on the capital improvement plan last few years, and we're finally kind of creeping up on the time that it's due, is to replace the bleachers at the upper elementary school in the all-purpose room and the bleachers in the Smith Gym. The current bleachers are the wooden ones, they're, they're heavy, they're not really ADA compliant, there's no handrails on them, so if you're, and especially the ones in the Smith Gym that go up, how many rows, Tom? About eight, about eight rows. If you're at the eighth row and you're trying to work your way down, to have a shoulder to grab on the way down, you really kind of need those supports, if people don't mind, I know I would, you know, and you don't have any handrails or aisles or anything like that. So in both these instances, we would replace those types of bleachers with the ones that we currently have in the high school, where the railings are there and they, they fold up and they're electrically operated. These are electrically operated also, right?
Correct.
But the new ones would be also, but they'd have the safety features in there, and the seats would be a little more comfortable than the hard plank that everybody's sitting on now. They've been, I think they've been original equipment to both those gyms.
I believe they are.
Yeah, so, they've definitely had their service life used fully, so it would be time to update them for primarily ADA and safety concern.
Are there any questions on bleachers? Seeing none, I will let you go over to boilers.
Okay. This is a new item to the capital improvement plan, and I'm going to lean heavily on Tom on this one. When we look through the Honeywell report that you have seen recently, there was lots of boilers in there, but the report basically focused a lot on ventilation. And that focus on ventilation, which was something that the board wanted to go forward with or take a real, real specific look at, kind of didn't leave much room for replacing existing boilers that we have. Some of these boilers are 30, 35 years old, and it's probably time to plan for their replacement as opposed to being surprised when it's, you know, minus 10 outside in January or something like that, because these items do have a lead time, it's not an off-the-shelf type of unit. And the first few, in fact, that three should be a two, is that correct, Tom?
Another point two.
Okay. So why don't I just, seeing that Tom has spoken up, why don't I just defer to him?
Okay. Most of our boilers in the district was replaced in 1991, so they're roughly a 28-year lead time now. Inside that packet that you received from Honeywell, as I was leaving through it, I noticed like Matt did, that there was no boilers in there, no thought of what's going to happen, and we're at year 28, and we're looking that we're getting really close to 30, because it said 30. When I talked to the engineers, they said 30 years is what the industry standard says you could be five years over, or you can be five years younger, depending on what happens, what type of load your boilers are under. So, at that point, we took a look at it and we said, well, what circumstances do we have? It's a little different in this district compared to other schools. And if you look at Master Cola Elementary School, it's unique in some ways, unlike Reed's and Thornton's, both have two boilers similar size. If they had one boiler went down, hopefully the other boiler can keep it maintained. At Master Cola Elementary School, we have a different scenario, it's a large boiler and a small boiler. Right now, when we're running peak days, both boilers are keeping up with everything. There's no room, there's no extra room for expansion. So that tells us also that through these years, those boilers have been working harder than any other boilers that we have in the given schools, not because they're different, but you have a large one and a small one, and there's not as much capacity in that. So, that's why we took a look at Master Cola Elementary School, and then the other part of that, besides more work, the other part of that would be that if we lost a large boiler, we'd only be relying on a small boiler. One of the unique things also about Master Cola Upper Elementary School that we learned when we went through the budget process about oil and now gas, is not only does it heat Master Cola Elementary School, it also heats the Smith Gym, and also heats the library at Master Cola Upper Elementary School. So there's, there's a lot out there that could be risk, especially if our large boiler goes down. So I thought that would be the place, if we're going to look in replacing boilers and think about our infrastructure, that place made sense to me to replace boilers first. And that's why we chose Master Cola Elementary School. And that's why we chose Mastacola Elementary School, probably the first two that need to be done. And in doing that, we would probably put condensant boilers, which, condensant boilers are a little different. And I'm not going to get into how, how they're different, but I can tell you one thing about them is where an oil burner will get 85, 87% efficiency, a condensant boiler would be somewhere around 98, 99. It's, it's, it's amazing. And the other reason why we'd use an incandescent boiler at Mastacola Elementary School is that the footprint of the room isn't very big. Incandescent boilers, one thing they do have size, they're much smaller. So we would be able to fit two boilers, the same capacity in the footprint that we have now. So that's why I think incandescent boilers would be good. And that's why, looking at this, I would start with Mastacola Elementary School.
Yep, thanks, Tom. There was, um, you know, size is, is, is a consideration when you're looking at retrofitting old, older buildings. That was a challenge that we faced when we were first looking at water filtration systems for the schools. And then Tom, working with, uh, a few vendors came up with, uh, an idea that, uh, we just segregate the, the drinking water from everything else. You don't need to filter the water that's being flushed down the toilet. You don't need to filter it at its source, but you need to filter every single fixture that goes to an area where, where it would be consumed or used in the kitchen or something. So that, that really lessened the footprint of these units. So doing the incandescent boilers, you get the efficiency and you can fit them in your, the area that's, uh, constrained by. Um, we also have, you know, high school coming around in 22, 23. And then a couple of units at, um, the upper elementary school in 24, 25. Uh, when we did the energy retrofit a while back, uh, to change over to natural gas, that replaced all the burners from oil burners to gas burners. But it left the boilers the same. So therefore, I didn't want anybody to get confused, you know, didn't you already do this? Well, we were, we replaced the burners, the igniters, the heat source, the boilers that contain the hot water were not replaced at that time. So now according to Tom's timeline of events and when things should fall in a replacement cycle, these are kind of not creeping up on us because we're identifying before they need to be. They get to their critical part, but they're showing up on the radar right now. So we just wanted to make sure we did our due diligence and make you aware of this. And this is going to continue in the, in the future. Not, not quite as, uh, not quite as expansive as roofs or the 15-year asbestos removal plan that we had, but it is going to be something significant. It's going to pop up every few years from now until, uh, I don't know, another five years past this plan goes. So that's the, uh, boiler replacement plan that we're looking at currently. Any questions for Tom on this?
I have a couple actually already. So I'm going to, uh, start by saying that I know that we use your file very religiously that shows total bonded debt and capital improvements.
Hmm.
And it does not have a boiler column in there.
That's correct, I need to add one.
We will add one.
Yes.
So as we're looking at those numbers, just realize that what we just discussed is not in, uh, those totals. Um, the second thing I would say is I know that the ferry has the two boilers similar sized. One could cover all if one fails, is my note. Am I getting that correctly?
They would have a better chance, depending on the day. Obviously, when you get very cold temperatures, one boiler probably went. But on a normal cold winter day, one boiler could handle that.
Keep the pipes from freezing, but not keep people warm necessarily, would you say? Maybe?
No one would be hot, but they won't be cold.
Okay, great. Um, and then what is the age of the ferry boilers that were?
They're also 1991, almost all our boil, boilers are 1991 except for the middle school and also the new section of the high school.
Okay. So those, those were my questions that kind of went first, but are there any questions on boilers? Seeing none, we are on to window replacement.
Uh, window replacement, uh, we've, we've talked about this, uh, before. And we're looking at primarily at the high school at this point in time. Uh, primarily for functionality. Um, the height, the windows, some of the, the windows that we're addressing, um, in these two years, 21, 22 and 23, 24 have lost their, their, their thermal insulation as far as the panels go. You can usually tell that when a window, uh, is not clear anymore. There's kind of a fog or a haze between the two panes of glass. That means you've lost your integrity of the insulation properties. And some of these don't, don't, um, lock correctly. Huh?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. I don't want to misspeak. If I misspeak, you just, you know, let me know like the highway. I don't want to do that 10 times in a row. So anyway, yeah, many of these windows do not, do not lock properly. Uh, we've been, um, coming up with, uh, let's say a Yankee solution where you take a stick and you put it there so you can't move it from the outside because of a stick. And that's the way we do things around here in New England. If a stick can fix it, well, you know, that's what's going to go there. Uh, but it's time to look at starting, starting to replace these. So like I said, we have $265,000 in 2021, 22 and another 316 in 23, 24. This includes, now correct me if I'm wrong, the removal of the caulking compound, which could include asbestos?
It could.
It could.
It would not include that. If that's in there, it would not include that.
Oh, it would not include that?
Would not include that.
Okay. So that may be something that we, we have to test to see if it's asbestos, the caulking compound, which is not uncommon.
So the, the caulking compound may contain asbestos, but the projection of the cost does not include
That's correct.
whether asbestos, if asbestos was, was present.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Are there questions on windows? Um, what percentage of the windows will be covered in the 21, 22 project and the 23, 24 project?
I could certainly speak about the 21, 22. That would be 52 windows that we have at the high school.
Okay.
And that would be E-section upstairs and downstairs. If you're looking at the building from the front, all the way on the left, as you're going, how would you, the building, the part of the building that faces my office.
Okay.
Along that line back down there, that would be it.
Yeah, percentage-wise, we'd have to do the math. Um, the windows in the new addition, new addition, the one that was done in 2000, um, are fine.
Correct.
Okay. And then when the addition was done in 2003 stories, the entire front of the high school as you're looking kind of at the, the main entrance, kind of in the corner, and then you're looking at the front, all those were done in the year 2002 as part of that project. Uh, if you look at the brick, you can slightly tell that there was different, um, sizes of windows that were used, and so the brickwork had to be added, but it blended in really nice. And, um, the windows having the bronze trim really looked nice on the front of the high school. Cause I, I recall when I, when I first came here, they were aluminum-faced and they had white shades and all the shades were up and down and up and down and up and down. I said, oh my gosh, we have to do something with that because that was like first impression. So when we, when we replaced the windows, we made everything uniform. We gave it a bronze kind of trim and we made the shades black. So you couldn't see that white shade, white shade, white shade, you know? With the black, it just all blends in. So that was done in 2001 when we did the, uh, three-story addition. So those are all good. But we can come up with a percentage, how many total windows need to be replaced? And then we could, we could figure that out.
Yeah, we'd like to do that with our technology too, so.
Yeah.
Think the same way. So excellent. Um, and I know that you've essentially covered the high school. So I'm going to ask about the ferry schools, JMU's and MES. Obviously, the middle school is pretty, pretty current, not worried about it. Um, but the other schools, um, what are the average age of those windows and, and the efficiencies? Do we face the same challenges in those facilities as we do the high school?
I would say we have to assess all of them. Uh, at this time, we, we have not went through each set of windows. Uh, I do have some concerns. If we're looking at a, a site of Mastacola Upper Elementary School, maybe the windows along the, uh, I would say the ball field side of the school, they probably need some attention and need to look into getting them done, see how many and start moving in that direction.
Okay.
Uh, Thornton's and Reeds, I think in general, we're okay, but we do have some issues at that school. Um, I think there's going to be some windows at Reeds and Thornton's. Both we're going to address in the upcoming budget.
Okay. So we're going to do some not as large CIPs, but as smaller, under $150,000 projects?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions on windows? Seeing none, um, we are on to, what are we on to, my goodness?
Field upgrade.
Oh, there it is, field upgrade.
There it is.
We're waiting for that.
This is for the artificial surface. Um, you can see that, uh, we had that out in 22, 23. And then it was moved in by the planning and building committee, uh, to 1920, that would be next year. Um, estimated cost on that project would be a million dollars. That's a, that's a placeholder. Um, Tom had a conversation with the facilities director over in South Heagan. And I pulled up some, some literature and their field was around the, uh, 850. Originally it was, it was bid at probably around 920,000. That was around three, four years ago. So we can probably do something, that's a good, that's a good budget number. Uh, but we're having, is it next week? 27th? Yeah, and the 27th, we have, uh, at least one. I know we have two people coming over to look at it and, uh, give us an update on the price because it's been a while since we, uh, we revisited this with a, a formal quote. So we'll be talking to two different companies right now.
Okay. Cindy, so your hand up, let's see Andy's.
I support moving this up, um, like the planning and building committee recommended for a few reasons. I mean, the more and more we're hearing about it, the more I'm realizing we need to move this up. For example, we've got the busing issues with the kids. We talked about it at our last meeting. We've got money that we're paying to GPS in Bedford for our home field to be in Bedford. And, uh, real estate is just limited and we really need to maximize, I think, for the safety of our children and for the, um, betterment of the broader community, um, to be able to get that turf field and to make that place complete. Not to mention, I think we have some significant safety issues and concerns regarding the, um, Wasserman Park where kids are doing the Cardinals football and there might be a lot of other uses for this turf field that will allow us to completely maximize that space in an area that's secure. We've got cameras there. Um, again, you know, I think I'm becoming more and more convinced that, uh, we need to move this up. And I think 2019 and 2020 is probably a good.
Andy?
So I don't know if either you or Rich are going to talk more, but I think it's important to understand that the approach is not simply to put it on the CIP, but to work proactively with the community to find ways that we can fund this without having to look completely for taxation. I mean, people are going to look at this and say, you're moving a million-dollar field next budget year. Oh my God. But I think the key is going to be, part of this has to be to be able to move it up is find ways to get funding other than just taxation to do this. So I, I don't know if Rich is prepared to speak or you or what may have, but I think that needs to be part of the discussion right now.
Um, I would, I would have to say that, um, it's, I have mixed emotions on this one. Um, I definitely think we do need funding. I'm very right with you on that. Um, we just cannot be all taxpayer and the thing is we also have to look at, when you do put in a field now, you're going to have to start budgeting for its replacement with something like a capital reserve fund. So, um, that's also asking to seed future monies as well. Um, the one thing that has me alarmed, um, and it's not the field itself. I think we've always known, um, what value the field brings. And I think we've had recent conversations talking about the additional value. I think what it comes down to is what can we do to get community support for it? Uh, we don't have a game plan in place. I'm not sure because it's the holidays right now that we're going to get a lot of, uh, seed money, be able to even, um, establish, you know, how much we'd be asking the taxpayers for. So those are the things that I'm not sure we're ready for. Um, what I would say is the total bonded debt with capital improvements with this in place, uh, not including the additional $350,000 for boilers, uh, well, actually I will add the 350 for boilers, puts us at 4.534 million dollars in just bonded debt and capital improvements. So those are debt payments we're legally required to do and capital improvements we're choosing to do. Um, that's my concern. And then it drops to 2.648 the next year, 2.633, and it goes down from there. So the placement of where it was is actually something that's, um, very valuable to us. And that is the stabilization of the tax rate. When we have a, a heavy load in one year, we will spike the tax rate. There's no way around it. And that's something that we need to be cognizant of, you know, we have to quote unquote, I hate to say it, but pick our fights. Um, when it comes to boilers, I'm more worried about schools not having heat than I am about a muddy field. So do I want the turf field? Yes, I absolutely do. Do I want to spike the tax, uh, the bonded debt and capital improvements from, to 5.6 million, back down to 2.6, a $3 million difference between the two years? I don't think that that's the right thing. Um, so I think we need a little time to, uh, collect, collect ourselves, find a way to do it. And at this point, putting it in the CIP has me a little concerned that we're going to create a spike in the tax rate, which we avoid doing. Um, Cindy?
I mean, I, it goes without saying, at least from my perspective, that this would be a warrant article. You know, that this would not be in our operating budget at all. Um, and then we leave that to the community to make those, um, that choice through their vote. But, um, I think we will get support, um, from the high school community and the community at large regarding this.
Hmm.
Um, it's been something we've all been hearing about now for years about the desire for this. And I just feel like, um, now is probably a good time.
Are there any other comments on the field? Seeing none?
Can I?
Oh yeah, of course, I'm sorry.
Just a quick two seconds.
I didn't look to my left.
Um, following on Cindy's remark, we were here in March of 2012 addressing this seriously. It's always kind of been, we need, we need, and then we, we were given the charge formally and look into it. And, you know, after a while, it's like you keep talking about it and talking about it and talking about it and talk about it. And here we are six years later and we're still here. When you get a group of parents came up to the last meeting, um, it was like, um, wow, they really want this. When you are looking at something you've worked on for years and a sizable number of people stand at the microphone and said, we're ready to take care of this now. Um, that was really what prompted us to putting this here now. I'm not going to put down the, the bonded debt and, and those are very rational. But on the other hand, you know, every time you delay these things, the cost goes up. So you might have a large bonded debt now, but if you wait four years, it's not going to go down any. Um, but the, the driving force was that, the feedback, um, making your athletic director, um, happy is minor compared to the parents that are concerned about everybody driving around. When I looked at other schools and other fields, some are very blessed. I mean, Concord has a whole city park with every field you could ever imagine. They don't need a turf field, they really don't. And, um, I think Pickerton is kind of the same ballgame where you get Merrimack that, that put this building in kind of a landlocked area. You've got a field and you've got a JV football team, a varsity football team, a boys and girls JV inside. You know, you've got six people trying to use one field and it's really never worked, excuse me, never really worked out right. So you put, it's kind of this perfect storm. You've got parents saying, we've had enough. Um, I look at it as school spirit. I mean, if, if your home teams are, you know, 12 miles down the road, you're not going to come out of the pack and say, oh yeah, Andy's playing soccer, you know? Let me see how he's doing. You end up with nobody in the stands and that's kind of a lonely feeling. The whole point is having a little bit of home field advantage is the crowd. And there isn't any without more kids going down. So I think it just became, um, you know, it's nice for us to work on something that's actually student. We tend to get boring buildings and these are all fine and important. And there's some safety concerns, obviously, you know, weak knee bleachers that, that don't fall down and whatnot. But this really benefits hundreds of kids, hundreds of kids, never mind the income potential of. Never mind the income potential of things like drum and bugle corps that can use it when it's not being used for athletically. So there's a whole range of things. So I don't dismiss Shannon's argument, but on the other hand, it's time and that's why we put it there for all the reasons you said.
Okay, and, and to that end, that's kind of my thoughts on that. I'm just gonna, I'll just put my cards on the table and say that I'm not opposed to it being this year, but I think what you says the parents want it and I agree, then that's who needs to ask for it. I think that we ask a lot of the taxpayers on the things that are the most paramount to us delivering an education. And that is things like facilities that have non-leaky roofs, um, heat. Um, you know, safe paving and drainage because we don't want to deal with, you know, issues that come when you have collecting water. So those are all things I would call backbone things that we do need to put in the operating budget. You're right, it should be a warrant article. I a hundred percent agree with it. But you know, as far as the, the here and the now, we need to hear to me from the taxpayers asking us for it a little bit. And if they don't, that gives us a couple of years to plan on our CIP to come up with an alternative funding mechanism. But at this point, the time is running out where we need to put up, you know. The one thing you did, you did bring up is you, yes, you did come in two thousand and twelve, but since then we put the um, the CIP item in twenty twenty-two. And I, I agree, that's probably a little far out. However, putting it into this current year doesn't give us enough time to organize and, and plan and come up with a, a way that we're not putting a million dollars into the taxpayers' bill direct. You know, gives us a little time, but with, when you have parents, you have, you know, booster clubs, fundraisers, those kind of things. Now we're talking about people that can organize to offset. Um, can they do it in six months? That would be ideal. Um, but if they don't, what happens? We're asking for a million dollars. So that's why I was looking for a little time. Not a ton of time, but a little time, so we're not asking for a million dollars. And again, then we need to come up with a plan. So when, when the um, field does go in, that we have a funding mechanism, so we're not, we're not scrambling for this million dollars every ten years. Which might be one point two million dollars at that time. So you know, we don't want to keep putting it um, where there's no, where it's all or nothing. You know what I'm saying? And so I think a year would be good, but if there's a way that things can be organized quickly. Um, expenses offset wherever possible. Um, we know that we would save sixty-five thousand transportation that we're considering uh, because of obviously uh, teams jumping in each other's cars. We as a board have not been a huge fan of that. Um, things like renting fields, that was only six thousand dollars. So we're up to seventy-one thousand dollars. So we have to find out how a million dollars is going to, um, it, it's not going to offset dollar for dollar, but those are things that we can also pass into the um, the savings. So, but we need to do a good job of coordinating the campaign. I'm not sure from November to um, November to February, when the warrants would have to be done, that we have enough time to do that. So my two cents. So what it's worth. So are there any other questions or comments on field? Okay, on to technology infrastructure upgrade.
Um, this is uh, an item uh, that's going to be uh, in the operating budget as far as is um, positioned in the technology budget that Nancy Rose is going to be presenting. Um, it doesn't drop off at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, we initially put it in the Capital Improvement Program to, to give it some visibility and get people used to seeing that every single year we have technology that needs to be replaced. We need upgrades that need to be made and everything like that. And I think it, it worked and now people are used to seeing it. So at that point in time, it's just going to drop off the, the CIP and become a, a regular budgeted item. Uh, Nancy knows much more about this than I do, but I do know that in nineteen-twenty, um, there's a um, storage area network, a SAN, that we spent around sixty-five thousand dollars for back in two thousand and nine. It has a lot of our software um, programs on that have been virtualized on that big uh, SAN that was purchased actually with the AR money for the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. So that's, that's been a while, two thousand and nine, and it's, it's running a lot of our programs right now. So that's a big ticket that's in that three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. As well as I know probably a hundred and fifty computers are end of life. They're going to be going off inventory. They're going to need to be replaced. And then I think with some of this, she wants to um, decrease the student uh, um, computer ratio, uh, get it below uh, get it below a certain amount, I think in below three in a lot of locations, um, below two in some locations. And that would accomplish that mission as far as, you know, computers per, per student. So this is a continued thing and for CIP purposes, twenty-two, twenty-three, we're just going to drop it off. But it's going to be continued to be in the operating budget. That's something that's a recurring expense. I remember when we first built the network years ago and we bought a bunch of computers and it was like, phew, we're all done. No, you just got started. So this is just going to continue on.
Are there any questions on the technology infrastructure? Seeing none? Uh, we hit the totals, so that we've gone through line by line. Um, so a couple of things. Um, this is our first time seeing the CIP historically. We have uh, gone through the CIP one night and done a workshop in that uh, meeting. So that's something we have the flexibility, um, if we want to stick with history to do. Um, the benefits of doing that are now that we've vetted it publicly, it gives us the opportunity to get feedback from the community on what we've discussed. Um, and um, then at our next meeting, we can actually vote upon it and do the actual um, what I would call exercise of, of adjusting the CIP as we see uh, appropriate. So um, if that works for you, we actually won't take a motion tonight because I didn't like. Um, but um, I think that would just give us an opportunity to have um, until the first meeting in December to um, take what we've already gone over tonight and give it an opportunity to breathe in the community and, and get the feedback that we need to make uh, informed decisions. So would that work for all of you? Or do you want to just go through a workshop now, Andy, and make all your motions?
Well, I mean, I don't want to, I want to let people think about what other things they might want. I just want to make sure that we're crystal clear that if somebody gets their eyeballs on this between now and then around the SAE's consolidation, because I think that's important that we are clear on what that is, so.
So to that end, um, if we do put this on the uh, website as presented, um, if we can do a watermark that says draft presented to the Merrimack School Board for review on this date, something to that effect. So they know that the decision hasn't been made. This is a draft document that we'll be working from for our next meeting. So I think that would just keep us transparent to, to our intention. So are we good on that one? Okay. So and then um, with that, we will go on to, well, actually I'm going to take a point of order. So um, so we're set with the CIP and we will reconvene at our next board meeting to go through the workshop of actually making the adjustments to the CIP for, for the next year. So thank you both very much and uh, safe driving. So and with the safe driving um, notion, I know we had public comments earlier, uh, but I want to reopen public comments um, so that we can address those who are in the public. So we do have a, a Boy Scout um, who's working on a badge. And I invite um, Maureen Mooney to come up and introduce um, and from that, we would just wanted to uh, because I know the votes are going to get worse as our evening goes on.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman, and thank you all. My name is Maureen Mooney. I live at Nine Handsome Drive. I'm here tonight with my nephew, David of Castleton Court, who is a seventh grader at Merrimack Middle School and currently working on his citizenship badge for Boy Scouts right here in town. So he and I decided which uh, Board of Government Public Service that we would see and we chose the school district. So here we are tonight at the meeting. We want to thank you for all of your service and wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Maureen, and thank you for your work with the Boy Scouts. So we hope you enjoy Merrimack Middle School and there's some great Boy Scout projects that were done in Greater Woods just behind your classrooms. So you can look forward to, to seeing those projects as well. So we appreciate the Boy Scouts and all they do for our, for our school community as well. So thank you and we hope you learned a lot tonight. There's a lot of numbers thrown around. So it's like a little math lesson. Get some extra credit from your teacher. So thank you, Maureen. Um, so to that, let's move on to our next agenda item, which is the first quarter curriculum review with Mark.
Thank you. So um, I'm going to uh, present to you tonight in two parts. One, having to do with current um, curriculum initiatives. And then um, the second part sort of with ongoing curriculum initiatives. So to start, um, I'll talk to you about our phys ed curriculum. Um, uh, health and phys ed curriculum. Um, that team is winding up or winding down, depending on how you look at it, winding its uh, its efforts. And so I expect that in the spring, we will be presenting the team, rather we'll be presenting its summative work for your um, review. Prior to that, it will um, go before perk in the spring, uh, sometime in spring semester, uh, sometime in the new year. Um, and then, and then after that, it will um, go before the board for its um, consideration. Um, they are um, proceeding exactly as every other curriculum team proceeds, which is um, to um, do research. Uh, that's what they spent the first uh, better part of a year really doing. It sounds like not awfully long time to do that, but when you consider that they really just meet at a max one day per month, that's not as much time as a year sounds. Um, to gather research about um, curriculum standards and expectations, um, national trends in health and PE. Um, trying to stay current with issues around um, mental health, stay current with issues around um, opioid uh, abuse, vaping uh, and the like. And so uh, in order to do a good job with that, they needed to spend a considerable amount of time just um, doing some research and consultation um, with other communities and uh, and so that's been uh, the work. What they are, what they are wrapping up right now are some details like creating a glossary. One of the things that we always strive to do um, with our curriculum documents is to make sure that they're um, readable and understandable for the community. And so uh, we're trying to make sure that the language that's used that might be really familiar to um, phys ed and health teachers, um, but not so familiar to parents and students and the community. Um, there would be an, an easy um, access of point of understanding. So working on um, creating a glossary. Um, working on um, uh, written directions for um, fitness tracking techniques. So one of the things that you'll hear about in um, the presentation in the spring semester will be on um, uh, devices that we are seeking to incorporate into the program that will allow students to track their fitness should they elect to do it or as part of the delivered curriculum. And uh, we want to make sure that in the effort of doing that, that students and again, their parents, most importantly, um, and the community for sure, uh, understand how to use those tools. And so we're working on developing literal guides for, for that, walking um, students through. Um, and once and for all, making sure that our essential questions and our enduring understandings, all of that UBD um, language is clear so that um, students and teachers understand the principles that they're working on, grade to grade to grade, and uh, that it makes sense for the students so that they are not being asked, as we don't ask students in any content area, to just, you know, uh, engage without consideration of what it means in the long term and in the big picture, but really working on making sure that that language is um, accurate and appropriate. And so that's that. Um, you also know, the board also knows that the district is currently evaluating two social emotional learning curriculums. Um, one is paths, the other is second step. Those are currently being uh, implemented, uh, uh, piloted, evaluated in the three elementary schools. Um, the reason that the upper elementary school at the moment isn't part of that is because the way that the social emotional learning curricula happen is um, they are primarily K to four and then five to eight. And so right now, our focus is almost exclusively, is exclusively on the elementary. Um, and depending on how this uh, goes and the speed with which we can uh, move ahead, but do so efficiently and accurately. Then maybe next year, we contemplate moving up into five through eight or if need be, a year after that. But anyway, that's the reason I refer to the elementary um, grades. But they've developed these uh, uh, mental health committee that you've met a number of times. Um, have developed a very strong rubric for evaluating the materials. Uh, and for um, gaining feedback from teachers. We met recently, I attended a meeting um, to just get a sense of the um, how is it going so far? What are the challenges that you're finding? What are the successes you're finding? Is it meeting the goals? Um, how is it being received by teachers? How is it being integrated um, into the other um, content areas where appropriate? Um, and so we're evaluating all that. There is no rush here whatsoever. This is an important thing. We know from every state meeting we've attended, um, and, and every um, agency that relates to mental health and health in general in the state of New Hampshire and in other states, that this is a very serious issue. And we used to talk about readiness to learn being, make sure you have a full stomach in the morning. Um, readiness to learn now includes being emotionally prepared to learn. Um, our job as educators, we're not mental health counselors, but we do know that we need to support students' emotional learning so that they can access the curriculum that we have to deliver for them. So we're going to take that methodically and very carefully and slowly, but assuredly we're just moving ahead. The third active current curriculum uh, initiative, you heard somewhat uh, recently from um, world language teachers. We've got a K through twelve world language curriculum. They presented to the board um, a bit back and that work continues. And like every other curriculum that we've had, the first, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, the first part of it is kind of slow. It sort of goes slow to go fast. So it's the first time that we've had an elementary, middle and high school team together. So they don't know each other well or did not know each other well. And so they're spending time getting to know each other. They're spending time uh, getting to know what each other's um, slots of responsibility have been when they've operated in silos. We're not operating in silos anymore. So what does it mean to develop a curriculum that builds from the fifth grade right on up through high school and multiple languages? So um, we're really doing a lot of, again, research, a lot of um, discovery um, and planning um, how we're going to proceed. And starting uh, I think next um, in January, uh, we're going to begin the process of drafting uh, units. But there's a long way from a unit draft of one course, one, one content area to a finished curriculum. So um, again, I've always been so grateful. We have always been so grateful for the board's um, time that it gives us to um, do this properly. Um, the uh, teachers are very grateful for the feeling that they have, which is that they have the time to do this right and not be rushed. And uh, oftentimes I, I hope what happens is that when, when we have something to present to you, that it, it is of quality. And so there, as I think you could see the night that they were here, they were very, very committed to doing this well. So they are um, fully in swing. Um, as I indicated to you at a previous meeting, starting in January of twenty nineteen, we're going to uh, develop, commence a social studies K-12 um, curriculum team. I've met with um, a number of the players involved, department heads uh, at the middle school, the high school, um, facilitators at the elementary schools. We have a plan in place to start in um, January of twenty nineteen and hit the ground running. And um, and I would say with that, that might be some of the easier work we've done because the curriculum that is in existence is being reviewed primarily because it's ten years old. Um, and needs to be revised, but it is a strong curriculum as it is written. So I suspect that um, while there'll be significant changes, it won't be a wholesale change because we are really working with a strong document now. However, um, in outlying years, the work that we do now will probably have some budget implications and so we'll be prepared to present sometime down the road in a couple of years, um, what those might be. So that's partly part of the process. Just under ongoing, I'll just say to you briefly, as you know, um, we're in our second year of math implementation of our curriculum. Second year of elementary program implementation and first year of our um, Algebra One, Algebra Two and Geometry program implementation. And what we have really focused on now is um, professional development that started at August Academy and it continues now. Um, we are fortunate that in the case of both vendors that um, that we are working with, that um, part of what we received is, as part of our package was uh, some, uh, some professional development, which includes online modules, um, a site visits. And so that part in terms of the uh, the program training is ongoing and we continue to um, And we continue to support our math facilitators and department heads, both at the middle school and the high school, to continue to support teachers as they implement the curriculum. And I've said it before, and I'm, I'm just going to reiterate, that the curriculum is the driving instrument for math instruction in Merrimack. The programs that we got are in support of the curriculum, and we continue to work with teachers to help them appreciate that fact. In the past, it had been that the programs drove the scope and sequence of everything that happened. That is not the case anymore. Our curriculum, which is a standards-based curriculum, is doing that, and we are working with staff to make sure that they understand how to use the tool in support of the curriculum. Our science curriculum now is in its second full year of implementation, and we are likewise really working now on providing professional development to teachers, so that particularly in the area of inquiry. So that we continue to support teachers in their effort to build up the most important part of the science curriculum, which is the inquiry method, the, the research, the hypothesis development, the hypothesis testing, which are fundamental for science. And so for every standard and strand that we have in the science curriculum, it's imperative that teachers continue to focus on developing an inquiry classroom. And so we're really working on, on that in terms of professional development. There will be a number of things that folks will be attending this fall, and, I mean, from now through the end of the year, and then also in the new year. And then the model that we've been following is train the trainer. So certainly, given sub situation, it's, it's not possible to have as many people as we might like to attend these things. So what we've decided is we're really going to focus on some key players, facilitators and teacher leaders. They go off and then they bring back the training. And then we've been very fortunate with our principals to, to have them allow faculty time to be used in sharing some of this information, as well as a lot of creative scheduling within the building's day, so that that information that's gained by a member or two can be shared more broadly. And finally, ELA, that's something that is constantly ongoing. So just because I don't talk about it all the time as an, as a standalone curriculum initiative, doesn't mean that we don't talk about it all the time. I meet regularly with the elementary language arts coordinators, and now that we have a full-time math, well, math too, but a full-time language arts coordinator at the middle school, that person is now part of that monthly meeting. And there are a variety of things that we continue to work on, like Lucy Calkins writing, making meaning words their way, which are all facets of our balanced literacy approach to literacy instruction in Merrimack. And we continue to develop and use ongoing assessments for progress monitoring, meaning making sure that we understand where a student is at a given point in time so that we can support them and extend them if necessary, and remediate them if the data points in that direction as well. And at the high school, we recently had a PERC meeting at which five courses were proposed. And so, as you know, curriculum works a little differently at the high school in that there are separate courses. So it's not a traditional curriculum in the sense of a K-12 scope and sequence. It begins to deviate just a little bit and be class-based. However, we monitor that through our process, including PERC. And so the courses that were proposed, I'm pleased to say, in, in every case, were the result of student surveys that were conducted, because remember, one of the things that we've been really trying to focus on Merrimack over the last few years is student voice, meaning a, we believe a learner is a better learner when he or she has a chance to have a little skin in the game. And when you ask students, if you had an English elective, what would you like it to be? If you could just press a button and have it be? And so sports literature was a very, very big winner there. And so the course that's being developed is going to be partly biography, so biographies or autobiographies of, of athletes that talk about grit and determination, for instance, that helped them to be successful in sports, but also in business and in life. And then also the literature like mountain climbing and other sort of adventure, treks across the Antarctic, Himalayan expeditions, and a variety of other kinds of literature that relates to sports. Another, which is always a favorite, is true crime. And so there is some talk of crossing with social studies and having a forensics, almost like a CSI kind of course. And so that's going to be in development as well. But right now, lots of excellent novels and nonfiction that relate to true crime, which is kind of always an attention grabber for students. In math, technical math is being proposed, and the reason for that is because there's an increasing awareness that not every student who graduates from Merrimack High School is necessarily needing to go to college or wanting to go to college. That's our, that's our goal, but it's not always the exact fit for every student leaving at, as a senior, and that's fine. And some students might benefit from understanding how math applies in the workplace. So things, for instance, like woodworking, auto mechanics, all require high levels of math proficiency. And this course is designed to help students recognize the practical work application of math as relates to post-secondary work. And so that course is being designed, and again, many students seem to be expressing that that'd be very valuable to them. And I want to just point out, college is always important to us. And I think we have to treat students as individuals, and for a variety of reasons, not every individual is entirely ready at 18 to go to college. And in the meantime, we're trying to support them as best we can with, to be college and career-ready. And then likewise in math, a course called Origins of Math, which is really designed for students who have an interest in sort of the history of math, the transition from not having a number system back in prehistoric times, but just, but then over time, being able to represent numbers with symbols. And then those symbols became a part of the Arabic system or the Roman numeral system, and helping students to understand the history of symbols as relating to math, and also having a math component as well. But conducting those math, that math learning and that math understanding using ancient symbols like Assyrians and the Chinese and, and so on. So really a fascinating course with a lot of backing and support from students. And then finally, Running Start Philosophy, which we, PERC has previously approved, but is now being proposed also as a, a half-year course. And so we just were talking about how that year-long course might be consolidated into a half-year. And so, so that work is ongoing, and we'll have more to share with you as the spring starts and we put those into the program of studies. But as always, I'm grateful for our teachers who take time out of their classrooms to come and actually develop this work, and we have good teams that keep trying to move us forward. So I'm happy to take any questions you have, but there is the first quarter curriculum update.
Any questions on first quarter? Seeing none, you hit on a couple of items, so I'm going to kind of put it out there. You mentioned with the health curriculum, social and emotional learning, and the work of the mental health committee and how that's gone into it. I'm going to apologize. We have a board budget message every year, and in consolidating the five messages, I omitted our support to fund social and emotional learning in our operating budget. And actually, I think Cindy, both you and Naomi had it specifically in there. And to that, I wanted to apologize. I know that's such an important thing that we are covering as a district. I know the mental health committee works diligently and to the point that they are helping the state. And for us, for me to miss that in our budget message was a huge fail on my part. So I do want to apologize to not only the board for missing that in our message, but to the mental health committee and the teachers who put the time into that work, knowing that it's going to impact our curriculum. So to that end, a couple of things. I think I want just to state publicly that we do expect that the operating budget will include any funding necessary for social and emotional learning. And if you will indulge me, I'd like to update my board budget message to be reposted to the website, including that language in it. So with that, I think it will set you up more successfully as we go through the budget process.
If I could just say, it's very kind of you. I do want to just say, the mental health committee has never doubted the board's support. You've been wonderful, gracious, and, and, and very supportive. And so I don't think for a minute that anybody on the committee doubts that for one second. But thank you.
But I do want to publicly put out there that this board does support that, and whatever operating budget requirements are necessary, that we want to make sure that they're being vetted properly. So thank you for that. So on to item number six, which is the revised school board policy with Mark. So it's the second review of the tobacco products banned use and possession in and on school facilities and grounds.
Great. So there's really very little to update you. I will just, for the purposes of the public, I would just draw your attention to just a couple of things that are primarily grammatical. On page one of three, under definitions, there's just a correction about the RSA, so it's RSA 126-k semicolon two. On page two of three, under D, all other persons, we have just added a comma, the principal, comma, site supervisor or designee may contact, I think in the previous iteration it was contract, contact. And that is really, those are the, the changes that were brought up at the previous board meeting.
Are there any other questions or comments to this reading? Seeing none, we will put it on consent for our, oh, okay, we're good, okay, before I said anything more. Okay, so we will put on consent for our next meeting, and if for any reason something material comes to light, we can always take it off, consent for further discussion. So, thank you. We're on to the housekeeping portion of our program, which is item number seven, which is the approval of the November 5th, 2018 minutes, all entertaining motion to accept, made by Cindy, seconded by Andy. Are there any edits to the minutes? Cindy?
I have two, two edits. I just have to get to the right page. Page six of 17, on line 239, it says board member Guayumi suggested, I would just change suggested to inquired regarding. And then on page 11 of 17, on line 446, it says prioritize it and then spread it out and add it to the capital improvement plan in an effort to continue taking care of their schools. And then I would just add, and in controlling the taxpayer impact.
Other than the others? Seeing none, we'll put the motion to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none, the motion carries 400. On to item number eight, other, is there any correspondence to come before the board? Andy?
I had a resident contact me with some clarifying questions about the background of the Brettwood property.
Okay, I had two. I had one on walkways with the latest snowstorm, the seven inches, it got way too early for my taste, that McElwain Drive has a lot of sidewalks that aren't, they're owned by the town, but there's a lot of student usage, and that it's not being maintained after storms. So students are walking in the road with the school traffic. And a parent reached out with concerns. I contacted the assistant superintendent of business, Matt, who's reaching out, and we will be tracking and following up to see what we can do to further get maybe greater collaboration with the town to get that cleared closer to storm ends while the kids are coming to school. And the second one was transportation. A parent asked about, had a follow-up question from our last meeting regarding transportation for athletes. So that's also been addressed. So were there others? And yet another, and then Cindy?
I just had a question about
Yeah.
the clearing of sidewalks. What's the scope and scale that you're going to talk to the town about in terms of clearing? Because, for example, the sidewalk that goes over the hype, over the ever turnpike of a Busk Lake Road, which is used by a lot of students going, that tends to not be cleared for a couple of days after a storm, is that sort of the scope of sidewalks?
Specifically McElwain, that you were talking about, where the buses are coming in and out.
So my only comment is if you're going to open this topic up, you need to do it a little bit more around the main area, because a lot of them don't get addressed for a couple of days afterwards, which could impact students.
Okay, we'd be glad to expand it. Cindy?
I had correspondence from a parent regarding the athletic transportation.
Okay. Are there any other items of correspondence to come before? Seeing none, comments, are there any comments? Naomi?
This is a minor point. I just wanted to, to ask about whether this is something worth thinking about. A lot of the surveys that have been coming before us lately have been waiving the two-week rule, and while each one of them has solid reasons for doing so, and I, I think we've done the right thing, I wonder if we want to give some thought to why that is happening so frequently and how that can be addressed.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. I, Mark, you've got one? Go for it, go for it. I'm giving you the mic.
I didn't want to interrupt. I just wanted to comment that last week, there was a vaping presentation at Merrimack High School, a presentation on the, not vaping, on the dangers of vaping. And, and I just wanted to comment because I, I think that it was just an outstanding example of what happens when students galvanize. And there is a student who's a member of the Students Against Destructive Decisions, who took this on particularly as his initiative. And beyond that, then all of SAD took that on. And they had a presentation last week that I thought was very, very well-done, an absolutely excellent presentation by Lori Warnock from the New Hampshire Poison Control Center, who I think was just really very, she talked the way kids understand. I thought she may have been a teacher one day, she just spoke, I think, really clearly. There were a number of parents, more than I actually anticipated, and I was delighted to see that. And they asked some good questions. It's clear that that's a concern on people's minds. And, and the students had outstanding feedback and outstanding thought about what that is, this, this phenomena of vaping, and how best to deal with it. And I think we'd all be wise to follow some of their advice. And I just am, I was very proud of the students because I thought they, they did what we hope students do, which is advocate, galvanize, take some leadership and ownership. And, and just as a practical matter, it was very well-run. And, and I just wanted to compliment them and, and thank them for their work, and to thank the members of the community who attended, because as Peter Bergeron, the assistant principal of the high school, one of them who was sort of the facilitator of the evening said, it's really a community issue, and we have to deal with it like a community. And so I'm really grateful for those who came and to who acted in that manner. So that was it.
Cindy?
And I can just add to that a tad too. I, I did attend as well, and it was, there was a really good turnout, and everything that Mark said is absolutely true. The students, for me, that was really impressive, the way the students that were there took the message and then found a way to provide feedback in a constructive way that was meaningful, and it was really a neat thing to watch that happen. Hopefully we'll see more of these types of events. And it was, again, there were parents, grandparents that were there, and as well as many of our administrators from the high school and the middle school as well, all that care about this very important issue in our community.
Thank you. I want to also make a comment tonight, and to quell the suburban legend that we have declining enrollment. So every month, we get in our board packets, enrollments for packets, enrollments for, um, so this is our third enrollment for the, for the year. So the first one from September 10th. And year to date, we have gained 20 students since the first day of school. So, and it's, you know, of course the suburban legend will say it's all kindergarten. We added 18, I'm sorry, 17 at Merrimack High School. We added one from pre-K to four. We added one in grades five and six and lost three in grade seven and eight. So actually the majority of our student increase, population increase came at Merrimack High School this year. So 17 of the 21 moves came from there. So Cindy?
And I think along that line, this came up, um, maybe earlier this fall, I believe I had asked administration for, um, some kind of a document that would show us over the last, I have to go back to the minutes and look, that maybe it was over the last five years and, you know, something like that. I think more along the lines of what you're saying is what's the reality? Because, um, I don't think that, um, from what I know, it hasn't had that kind of a decline
Right.
that people say. So, um, or, um, people suspect or guess, I guess is what it would be. So I'd really like the facts out there. So we have that documented and I, I just don't think we've provided that to the public and it is something that comes up frequently. So again, I guess I would re-ask administration to get us, um, those numbers at least over the last few years.
Sounds good. Um, we are on to item number nine then. New businesses or any new business to come before the board? Left, right, seeing none. Committee reports. Are there committee reports from the board? Andy?
Well, we already, excuse me, we already heard most of it. Planning Building Committee met a week ago yesterday, I believe. It was a Tuesday of last week. Um, most of the discussion was around the field and you've heard from, uh, the chairman about that. Uh, there was some discussion around the SAU Sped Building. Um, I think that, uh, that we made it clear to the, the, the Planning and Building Committee, heard that we've got to look at the long-term of this rather than making something quick out of it. So, um, but I will say that, that they had full quorum in the meeting and it was a lot of very active conversation, probably more interest in getting really resolving a lot of these issues than I've seen in the past. So I'm looking forward to seeing the momentum keep up with that committee.
Thank you. I had two committee reports. Healthcare Cost Containment met on the 7th. Uh, we had an email on effective email communication, um, obviously with teachers, parents, uh, you know, amongst peers, just the most effective and appropriate way to communicate in this, uh, new business environment we're all navigating. And, um, you know, email is obviously a huge, uh, way of communicating, uh, with parents and, uh, of course each other. So, um, on top of that, we did, uh, biometric and, um, healthcare screening, um, data. And we're definitely having a lighter year than prior years. And, uh, we're looking to, uh, re-energize our efforts to increase those, um, biometric screens and healthcare screenings because that does help us with, um, stemming healthcare costs by just really taking a good, um, account of, of help. So, so that was discussed as well. Um, and actually I'm sorry I didn't make the vaping, um, event because I was at my NHSBA board meeting, uh, which was happening at the same time. And we are getting ready for a delegate assembly in January and our, um, we went through the, uh, proposed resolutions and, uh, we'll be talking about topics that, uh, we will present in January. So looking forward to that. Um, so are there any other committee reports? Seeing none. Um, item number 11 is public comments and agenda items, but there is no public, so we will close that. We will take a moment to sign the manifest and I will entertain a motion to go to non-public session per RSA 91 dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, sections A, B, and C, made by Andy, seconded by Naomi. Naomi, how do you vote?
In favor?
Cindy?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. The motion carries 400. Thank you and good night.